I call this regular meeting of San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 21st of 2025. It is 6:00 PM and it's going to get very cold tonight. Ms. Trevino, please call the roll.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, first off this evening, we will have our invocation. And the pastor of Promised Land Church, Robin Steele, is joining us and he is online. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Yes. Are you guys ready?
We are.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for this opportunity to serve the people of San Marcos. We're so thankful for this city, the beauty, the history, the community, and we acknowledge the important work that we're doing tonight and the potential to shape lives and foster unity. We ask for your wisdom to guide every decision that's made, grant clarity to our council members as they deliberate, help us to lead with integrity and compassion and fairness, and always put the needs of San Marcos above our own personal interests. May everything that happens here reflect respect and shared commitment to the city of San Marcos. We pray a blessing over the citizens who entrust our council with this responsibility. May this meeting be a space where diverse voices are heard and collaboration thrives. We pray for unity. We pray that your peace will rest on this council and all who are gathered here. Help us conduct this meeting with patience and understanding and a heart for service. May the work done today bring honor to your name and blessing to all the people of San Marcos. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Yeah. Next up is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Ms. Trevino, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we will proceed on to item one.
Receive a stat presentation, hold discussion on the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm actually here this evening to introduce Brittany Faulkner, who is a face you have probably not yet seen. Brittany joined the city in 2022 as a senior planning technician, and she comes to us with an undergraduate degree in environmental studies from the University of Pittsburgh and two master's degrees from Texas State, or I'm sorry, University of Texas at Austin. So Brittany has a lot of experience and a lot of education. I am so excited. One of the reasons I wanted to announce her is that she's now a certified member of the American Planning Association's AICP program. So we are really excited to be able to actually finally announce that. Brittany was the project manager for the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan, so we felt that it was best for her to give you the presentation about what we've done and what we're bringing forward in the coming months. Brittany?
All right, thank you, Ms. Faulkner.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, council members. Brittany Faulkner, Senior Planning Technician, here to present an update on the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan. Next slide. As part of the comprehensive plan, seven area plans were identified and directed by city council. Tonight, we're excited to present to you the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan. The boundary for this plan was approved by city council back in August of 2022, and it encompasses the area between I-35, Highway 80, and River Road. Next slide. The role of neighborhood area planning is to look at and balance the needs of specific neighborhoods with opportunities for those neighborhoods. It studies the character of the neighborhood or its DNA, and it provides an opportunity to speak with neighborhood residents on more localized key topics. It also helps to identify projects and programs that are specific to the neighborhood. Next slide. We started development of the plan back in October of 2022 and have steadily walked the plan through the drafting process towards adoption. Next slide. Development of the plan involved speaking to a variety of different people throughout the process. Community engagement was an integral part of the comprehensive plan, and so we wanted to continue that through the development of the area plans. The intent of the plan is to balance all of the voices that were heard throughout that development process. We hosted five steering committee meetings along with a steering committee walking tour of the neighborhood, and the steering committee was made up of residents from within that plan area boundary. We also held two community workshops and several intercept events. Postcards advertising these events were sent to all property owners and tenants within the boundary for each event. The postcards included both English and Spanish text, and staff had a Spanish speaker present at these community workshops to serve the demographic of the neighborhood. Take-home toolkits were also provided at these events so that community members who needed more time with the information or neighbors who weren't able to attend the event were able to participate and provide input in that way. Over 300 comments were received across the two community workshops and the draft plan comment period that had been opened. Additionally, staff attended two meetings that were focused specifically on public safety within Blanco Gardens. Summary reports for each of these engagement events can be found in Appendix C of the plan, and these reports summarize comments received at each event. It highlights overall trends and themes, and then it includes photos from these events as well. Postcards were sent informing property owners and tenants that the draft plan is moving forward for adoption. Approximately 1,500 postcards were mailed for each engagement event as well as to inform the tenants and property owners of the adoption, totaling more than 5,000 postcards that were mailed overall. Next slide. Next slide, please.
Just one second.
Thank you.
Is it showing up?
It is, yes. Thank you so much. So diving into the plan itself, the plan is broken out into seven key topics: Getting Around, History, Art and Culture, Public Spaces and Amenities, Streetscapes, Business and Economy, Housing, and Building Form and Development. Next slide, please. Each of the seven topics describes key concepts and existing conditions within the neighborhood, and it also describes community and stakeholder feedback that were received as part of the plan's development. Additionally, each topic identifies specific recommendations that can be carried out in the plan area, with the intent of these to be carried out by the city of San Marcos itself. Next slide. We were strategic and intentional about tying what we heard as part of community engagement back to the plan and any of the recommendations that were incorporated within the plan. Our second community workshop was all about refining what we had heard at our initial meeting, and that refinement continued throughout the drafting process. On this slide here, you'll see a page out of the Getting Around section of the plan and how one of those subsections is broken down. So it begins with the key concepts and existing conditions, followed by community and stakeholder feedback. At the end of the subsection, specific recommendations for the plan area are listed. Next slide, please.
Ms. Faulkner, can you hold up just a minute and let me ask the control room, do y'all see that big gray box at the far right of the slide?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Is there a way to fix that?
Not on our hands.
That's better. It's in a place that is not overlaying text now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Faulkner, please continue.
Thank you very much. So this slide demonstrates how the big ideas that we heard from the community and stakeholders have been translated into recommendations. One of the big idea examples is that community members expressed that they wanted to feel safe while walking and biking through the neighborhood and that they would like to see additional play spaces for children. You can find two recommendations which speak to bettering the neighborhood regarding this specific issue. One of the examples we pulled out is Streetscapes 1.2, which says to consider safety improvements at high-traffic intersections and other areas where incidents between pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers are most likely, including the vicinity of Stokes Park along Cape Road. And specifically talking to this area, during the area plan process, residents had expressed that they wanted to implement a traffic control measure in this area to help reduce vehicle speeds and to make it safer to move between the neighborhood and the San Marcos River. They noted that some temporary stop signs had been put in place at the intersection of River Road and Cape Road, and this was due to some ongoing construction that was occurring in the neighborhood. Within months of receiving this input, myself and other staff worked with members of our engineering department and our public works department to replace that temporary installation with permanent four-way stop signs. So it's just an example of how some of the things that we've been hearing at these community engagement events are being translated into on-the-ground techniques. Another example recommendation that we pulled out is Getting Around 2.1, which says to install signage or other wayfinding measures to designate a walking loop trail along key streets throughout the neighborhood and to consider streetscape enhancements to promote the use of the trail for commuting to services as well as for active recreation and fitness. A priority route was identified by the community along River Road, Bug Lane, and Linda Drive. We would consider branding this walking loop trail as Cuevas Walking Loop, which highlights a longstanding local business within the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Several recommendations include enhancements to specific locations within the neighborhood that help to achieve an overall goal. This example here is from Streetscapes 1.2, which suggests that existing conditions may be upgraded to improve pedestrian and children's safety at Stokes Park. And this illustration was actually provided to us by one of our steering committee members. Case studies of similar communities to San Marcos that have experienced success with a specific recommendation are also included throughout the plan. This case study highlights Santa Fe, New Mexico's annual pop-up playground event, which could be similarly implemented in Blanco Gardens to identify areas for potential new parks or public spaces. Next slide, please. Implementation of the plan is just as important as development of the plan, and the action plan section outlines how the goals of the plan may be achieved. For each topic and subtopic within the plan, there are short-term action items that can be implemented, and these items can be easily checked off of the list as we move into implementation. It would essentially act as a to-do list while we move into that portion of the plan. The action plan also identifies potential leaders and partners as well as the driver that would be needed to implement that action. As I mentioned before, in most cases, the city will be the driver, and implementation will require us to work with many other city departments, including public works, parks and recreation, and engineering as some examples. Next slide, please. Implementation will require financial investment as well, so there's a list of financing tools which identifies outside funding sources that can be applied for. Again, in most cases, the city is the driver and will most likely be the entity that is applying for this funding. But I would also like to note that this is not an all-encompassing list, and staff does recognize that additional funding could become available in the future. Next slide, please. The neighborhood character study is included in the plan as an appendix, and this study was directed by city council to be completed with each area plan. The neighborhood character study documents the factors that contribute to the character of the neighborhood, such as lot size, architectural style, and building orientation. It provides descriptions of qualitative metrics and quantitative factors and recommends how the existing neighborhood character can be respected and maintained. Throughout plan development, staff was on the ground going property to property to gather data and use geographic information systems, more commonly known as GIS, to provide some of those metrics as well. Next slide, please. Following adoption, the neighborhood character study will become publicly available, and it will be most commonly used in pre-development meetings where staff can discuss how a proposed development can incorporate these guidelines so that it can be compatible with the existing neighborhood character. Without the guidance of the neighborhood character study and the area plan, the concern is that out-of-scale and otherwise non-compatible development will result. Next slide, please. As with the downtown area plan, once the Blanco Gardens Neighborhood Area Plan is adopted, nothing on the ground will change until it's implemented through other initiatives. Following adoption of the plan, staff will need to evaluate and update the development code as necessary, incorporate the plan into the CIP, and begin evaluating projects, plans, and policies for short-term implementation. Next slide, please. Staff provided a survey to the eight-member steering committee following their final meeting on December 11th, and four responses were received. All voted yes to recommending the plan to both Planning and Zoning Commission and city council for consideration, while four members did not respond to the survey. I did want to take a moment just to thank the steering committee for all of their hard work and dedication throughout this area plan process. They were a really engaged group that, you know, dedicated themselves to a more than two-year-long process. They provided guidance and updates to both myself and other staff members, and they really just helped to spread the word to their neighbors and other community members about engagement events that were happening, where the plan was in the development process, and just really helped to create this document as a whole. And so I wanted to thank them for their hard work as well. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the adoption process of the plan as it currently stands. While not required, we did provide updates to both Neighborhood Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission and have let the community know that the plan has begun the adoption process. We will also host a neighborhood presentation meeting where community members can ask questions about the plan and view the adoption schedule. The plan is being presented to Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation on February 11th, and staff anticipates it will be forwarded to city council for a public hearing and discussion on March 4th, where no action will be taken, and then again on March 18th, at which city council will take action. Next slide, please. To view the final draft plan and to explore past events and ongoing CIP projects within the Blanco Gardens neighborhood, please visit the project story map for the most up-to-date information. And you can access the story map either by clicking that little URL link in the top-left corner or by scanning the QR code. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. And council, are there any questions at this point in time? You'll see it a couple more times, and there'll be other presentations. Anything for today? Seeing none, then...
I just, if I may say something.
Yes, ma'am. I didn't see a hand up, so I didn't call on you.
My apologies. Brittany, I just want to say thank you for the report. I went through the entire plan and read through. I just want to say, there was a lot of great things in here, and if my colleagues haven't actually read the plan all the way through, there's a lot of good initiatives that I think we could really emulate in other parts of the city. And so I just appreciate specifically, I know I asked some questions on the message board, and I believe all of them were answered by Amanda, yes. So yeah, no, I just wanted to give you kudos and congrats on your new certification as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I made about a third of the way through reading word by word, and I'll have it finished in another week or so. Anyone else? Comments? Anybody?
Do you mind if I, just really quick, because I don't think council member Rodriguez and our new council members know that we do have other area plans going on, and we are using this as a model. So I think we'll see a lot of similar recommendations that are tweaked for other neighborhoods in those specific plans. So more to come on neighborhood area planning.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Anyone else? If not, we will close out item one with a thank you to Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Hernandez, and everyone who has worked on this plan, the committee, all the participants, everyone who provided information, because that's what makes for a better plan, is when we hear from the neighborhood. So thank you all. Next up is our Consent Agenda ordinances, resolutions, and other items number two through seven may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is needed unless a council member chooses to pull one of these. Is there anything anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda, two through seven? For those who are at home. Seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept items two through seven.
Motion to... Motion to approve two through seven for consent agenda.
I've got a motion from Mr. Mendoza, looking for a second. Got a second from Mr. Scott. Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
On to item eight with our consent agenda. Note, there are no public hearings this evening, which has worked out pretty well considering the weather. Number eight.
Consider approval resolution 2025-12R approving a one-year extension to the contract with Tharkittle Corporation through Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative purchasing program for the purchase of water meters and registers for the city's water utility system for an estimated additional amount of $950,000 authorized to city manager her designate to execute the documents necessary to implement this extension on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions on this item? We're buying stuff that we need. Ms. Trevino?
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, item nine.
Discuss and consider appointments or reappointments to positions two and four and confirm appointments of positions seven, eight, and nine to and appoint a chair of the tax increment reinvestment zone tourist number four, Paseo Robles, now known as Kissington Tree Board of Directors and provide direction to staff.
Okay, and are we ready to do this one? Are there some things that we need to do some further research on?
Mayor, I am requesting for council to postpone items nine and 10 for February the 4th. I just need to do some editing on the RF and the caption.
Yeah.
Motion to postpone to February 4th.
I will accept a motion for item nine by Mr. Scott.
I will second that.
To February 4th, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions?
Thank you for cleaning it up.
Yeah, this is a group that didn't meet for a number of years, and there wasn't a need, and so things kind of fall out of sync sometimes. But Ms. Trevino is going to do some research and get it back in perfect shape for us. Any other comments? None, we'll vote on postponement.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, if you will read item 10, please.
Discuss and consider appointments to or reappointments to positions one, two, and five. Confirm Hayes County appointments to positions three and four to and appoint a chair of tax increment reinvestment zone tourist number five downtown Board of Directors and provide direction to staff.
Similar for this one?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Do we need a motion to postpone?
Looking for a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone item 10 to February the 4th, 2025.
All right.
Okay.
I have a second from, Mr. Gonzalez, were you seconding that?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I'll give you credit for it.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? We will...
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez. Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And we're on to item 11.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 consultation with attorney and Section 551.072 real property of the Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and deliberate regarding the possible lease of real property at 201 South LBJ Drive.
And we have, as we always do, we posted this on our three o'clock agenda. We did have that executive session. We did conclude our discussion at that time, so we do not need to go into executive session again, so we may move on to item 12.
Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the executive session matter considered during the work session, just as stated above.
And we did hold our discussion and we provided direction to staff, which brings us to our next item, question-and-answer session with press and public related to items on this agenda. Do we have anyone sign up?
No, ma'am.
Anyone with questions? All right, then we will close that out. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll give Ms. Rodriguez that one. Second?
Second.
Mr. Mendoza. Let's vote on adjournment.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And we are out of here at 6:26.
Wow.
What'd I tell you? I had said 6:30, maybe 6:20. What'd I tell you? I had said 6:30, maybe 6:20.